Call the meeting of April 24, 2012 to order. Roll call.
The record will reflect that Councilmember Rozansky is currently absent.
At this time, I ask for public comments on items on the closed session agenda.
Mayor Gardner and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher and I wanted to comment on closed session item B, which is your conference with the city manager regarding his negotiations with the Kirchi and Ardell interests about leasing their docks over the public tidelands. It's nearly two years now since you set up an ad hoc committee to coordinate efforts to bring harbor charges in line with fair market value and a little more than a year since you authorized the city manager to hire an outside consultant, Mr. Alan Cotton, to assist him in developing and negotiating leases for those public tidelands. I'm quite pleased to see that the closed session announcement says that it's going to be the city manager rather than the outside consultant who will be leading the negotiations. However, there's still a few things about this that bother me, the main one being that on the face of things, it seems a bit premature, since I'm not aware that the council as a whole has held any public hearings or set any clear policy as to how best to achieve our tidelands' goals and objectives, or publicly set any parameters for the kinds of leases that might be considered. Indeed, as recently as April 5th, the harbor charges committee coordinated a well-attended public workshop on the very subject of leasing the commercial docks, and I believe the attendees had the impression that the committee and the staff were still in the process of digesting public input and formulating a plan. The present closed session may well leave at least some of that public wondering why these two properties have been singled out, and exactly what is being negotiated before the larger picture, and indeed, some of the details, such as whether leases are desirable and how long they should be for, have been worked out. An additional concern is that the ad hoc committee was formed two years ago, and at that time, it was assumed that it would be able to complete its work in a year, actually less than a year. And under the enabling resolution, it has not actually been authorized to continue in operation for more than a year, actually since the end of March last year. So at least technically, this is something like the airport negotiations, where we seem to have individual council members working with the staff, and I'm sure it's all in good faith, but they're working on problems for which they have not been given any clear direction by the city council as a whole, at least in public. And I don't think that's good public policy, especially in view of our city charter, which places the power of governance in the city council as a whole, not in the individual members. So again, I think that with regard to closed session item B, public may be wondering why these two properties, and why now before a policy has been publicly agreed to. Thank you.
Thank you.
The resolution, he is correct about the resolution, we'll be coming back to city council here in the future to extend the time period for the committee going forward. Did you have any other questions, Mayor Gardner?
No, I just, did you want to comment on why it's these two as opposed to?
No, I don't think any comments necessary.
All right, thank you. Any other public comment? Then we'll adjourn to closed session. We will reconvene the meeting of April 24th. Roll call, please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
A closed session report.
There's no closed session report this evening, Mayor Gardner.
Thank you. I'd like you all to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Hill, and remain standing for the invocation by Councilman Curry, Mayor Protem Curry.
Please follow me and salute in our great country, our citizens to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing and join me in prayer. Our Lord God, we ask your blessings upon our nation, upon our state, and upon our city. We, your servants, ask for wisdom in the deliberations tonight. We ask for compassion upon all of our citizens, and particularly those less fortunate, and we pray that we would always seek your guidance in the things that we do. In your name we pray, amen.
We have two presentations this evening. The first is our Bike Month proclamation. I think we have representatives from our Bicycle Safety Committee. If you come stand at the podium while I read this. Whereas, for more than a century, ah, the bicycle has been an important part of the lives of most Americans, and whereas today, millions of Americans engage in bicycling as an environmentally sound form of transportation, an excellent form of fitness, and provides quality family recreation, and whereas the education of cyclists and motorists as to the proper and safe operation of bicycles is important to ensure the safety and comfort of all users, and whereas the League of American Bicyclists and independent cyclists throughout our state are promoting greater public awareness of bicycle operation and safety education in an effort to reduce accidents, injuries, and fatalities, then I, Nancy Gardner, Mayor, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby proclaim May 2012 as National Bike Month. I want to celebrate this with members of our Bicycle Safety Committee, who meet monthly and have been already very productive in terms of bicycle safety. We have new striping, sharrows, and other factors, as well as educational programs that they have been very responsible for. And our second presentation is to recognize Donate Life California, and Lisa Pedral, Pedral of One Legacy is here. If you'd step forward, I'll read the proclamation. Whereas organ, tissue, marrow, and blood donation are life-giving acts recognized worldwide as an expression of compassion to those in need, and whereas more than 100,000 individuals nationwide, and more than 20,000 in California, are currently on the national organ transplant waiting list, and every 90 minutes, one person dies while waiting due to the shortage of donated organs, and whereas the need for donated organs is especially urgent in Hispanic and African-American communities, and whereas more than 600,000 units of blood per year are needed to meet the need in California, whereas at any given time, 6,000 patients are in need of volunteer marrow donors, whereas a single individual's donation of the heart, lungs, liver, kidneys, pancreas, and small intestine can save up to eight lives, donation of tissue can save and heal the lives of up to 50 others, and a single blood donation can help three people in need, and whereas millions of lives each year are saved and healed by donors of organs, tissues, marrow, and blood, and whereas the spirit of giving and decision to donate are not restricted by age or medical condition, whereas nearly nine million Californians have signed up with the state-authorized Donate Life California Registry to ensure their wishes to be organ and tissue donors are honored, and whereas California residents can sign up with the Donate Life California Registry when applying for or renewing their driver's license or ID cards at the California DMV. Now, it is resolved that I, Nancy Gardner, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire council, do hereby proclaim April 2012 as DMV Donate Life California Month. In the City of Newport Beach, and in doing so, we encourage all Californians to check "yes" when applying for or reviewing their driver's license or ID card, or by signing up at www.donatelifeCalifornia.org, or www.don-v-i-d-a-california.org.
Thank you, Mayor Gardner. And city councilmembers, my name is Lisa Pedral. I am a donation development coordinator with One Legacy, where the Donate Life organization that covers the Orange County area, and I'm also a daughter of a recipient. My father received a heart and a liver transplant about four years ago. And I'm here with today with two very special people, Dr. Rosemary Meagan from Hoag Hospital, and Mr. Eric Piper, who is also a local resident here. So I invite them to share a few words.
Mayor Gardner, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for the council's recognition and support of the DMV process to register as an organ donor. This is an important process, as there are currently over 113,000 people on the national organ transplant waiting list. The gift of life impacts many individuals. It is appropriate to pause and reflect on what is involved. It takes courage to accept and honor the decision of a family member to be an organ donor, and to support the decision of a family member around the process of the time of their death. The recipients undergo urgent surgery with all the hopes and challenges that this potential life-changing surgery brings. I have been a Newport Beach resident for 10 years, and work as an intensive care physician at nearby Hoag Hospital. In that role, I became aware of the incredible generosity of the Newport Beach community. Hoag Hospital has the highest number of tissue donors in Orange County, and the highest number of organ donors for a non-trauma hospital in the area. To that end, Hoag Hospital now has permanent memorials to honor these donors. The Tree of Life is a large metal sculpture in an outside garden. There is also a Book of Life outside the hospital chapel entrance. Please continue to champion the gift of life and organ donation in our community. There are so many who need our help. Thank you.
Thank you.
I wish to thank you for the proclamation. I'm a heart transplant recipient, and I got it at the advanced age of 74. We've all been reading about Chaney who got it at 71. I've had it now almost four years, and one of the things, it ties in with the bikers, the fitness thing. The reason I got it at this advanced age is I was fit, and everything was clean, except my heart was shot. It was a virus that hit it. So I recommend that we support the bikers, and anybody else into exercise, and again, I want to thank you for backing this proclamation.
Well, thank you all very much for coming out this evening.
The presentation prompted me to look, and I noticed that I've had, I've been a donor since at least I was 15 pounds lighter, so I think I had to probably follow the bikers too. But it's an important thing, and thank you for coming down to highlight this.
All right. Notice to the public?
The city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. Speakers must limit comments to five minutes on agenda items. The council has the discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cellphones off or set them in the silent mode. Now's the time for council announcements or matters which council members would like placed on a future agenda for discussion, action, or report.
Councilwoman Daigle?
Yes, I attended the annual recognition of volunteers at Oasis Senior Center, and it was actually quite impressive. I think there's tens of thousands of hours that people volunteer in our community, and among the functions that they're providing is a travel office, they have seniors that can help you prepare taxes, they have seniors that can help you, that can take your blood pressure, they also have greeters at the facility, and one of the really nice features is if you're not getting out for daily contact, they will telephone you and see how your day is going, and if they can assist with any of your needs. And then additionally, we have a Meals on Wheels program. So I was quite, it was really good to recognize all the volunteers and see that the community does have support for those who actively participate in a way, as in those who are unable to leave their homes on a daily basis. And then at our last council meeting, we had some budget items, and I believe there will be subsequent sessions on the budget, and I would like to get a little bit more information on one of those items, the reservoir cover, and I was interested in knowing, you know, as with any purchase, what the various materials are that are available, who the vendors are that provide that, and then any information on pricing, and then additionally, what is our, what will be our process to obtain that new cover. And we have a situation where with the assistance of the federal government, we purchased a whole system out of Big Canyon Reservoir, and the actual cover itself has a defect. So I'd be interested in how we're going to go about replacing that, and a little bit more information would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. I also was at the volunteer lunch for Oasis, and I was just amazed at the breadth of the programs. It was, they have so many good things going on there. Councilman Hen?
Just a couple of things. On this past Sunday, along with Mayor Gardner, I was pleased to attend the Newport Ensonada kickoff party down in Balboa Village. It was really quite a nice event with a really wonderful Woody car show, and lots of families and activity, and special deals for people shopping down there. It was very well attended. Mayor Gardner's remarks at the kickoff were very well received, and--
Very short again.
Yeah, I think she said everything was fine. And, but in any event, it was really nice to see a family-friendly and fun event down in the village, and part of the effort of the Balboa Village Business Improvement District to really revitalize that area as we go along. And then, the Balboa Village Citizens Advisory Panel will be meeting at 4:00 PM at the Nautical Museum. I didn't write down the date. I'll get it here in a minute. But that next meeting will be concerned with the brand promise and the vision, the desired vision for the Balboa Village. And so I think it'll be a very interesting meeting, where we'll be discussing some survey results, and with the assistance of visits Newport Beach, really do a good job here redefining our vision and our brand promise for Balboa Village. Lastly, I'd like to congratulate our police department once again for the eighth year in a row, winning their class and division for the Baker to Vegas 120-mile relay run. That's an amazing feat. Dave, did the chief run in this year's race?
He did, he finished it. He was the last leg, I mean.
He was modest about not saying that in the announcement on that, but that's great. Our police department is apparently a very, very fit police department. Congratulations again to them.
Councilman Selich?
No announcements tonight.
Councilman Hill?
Only one brief one. I did graduate from the Citizens Police Academy. They decided not to hold me back. And I would, in all seriousness, highly recommend that every one of our Newport Beach citizens consider taking that 12-week class on Thursday evenings for three hours. It will give you an incredible behind-the-scenes understanding of the activities of our police department, and was well worth the time and the education value of it. They didn't give me a badge or a gun, but--
They knew what they were doing. Councilman Rozansky?
Nothing, thank you.
Mayor Protem Curry?
A couple of things. First of all, I was honored by the Association of California Cities of Orange County to be elected as first vice president, and I look forward to another exciting year of creating good public policy with the association. I was privileged to provide opening and welcoming comments to the National Association of Intercollegiate Athletics, who had their annual conference here in Newport Beach. More than 400 people from colleges throughout the nation gathered in our community. And on the 14th, along with Mayor Gardner, I participated in the annual art show by the Newport Beach Arts Foundation at the Oasis Center, and once again, the mayor made succinct but cogent comments to that crowd. And I also represented the city at the reception for the Orange County Marathon, coming up the first weekend in May. That program is going to fill our hotels, and it's also going to bring international recognition to our community, and we look forward to welcoming them once again. And then finally, municipal elections were held in Panama City Beach, Florida last week, so I would like to send my congratulations to the new councilman from Ward Four, a financial advisor active in the Relay for Life by the name of Keith Curry. And I'm going to work out a deal to swap signs with him as we get down there, since we're now going to be getting Google alerts on each other for the rest of our lives.
Thank you. Well, I just want to show one, this is called Southern California's Coastal Wetlands, and it's a wonderful fold-out, which helps people identify all the critters that you can find in our wetlands, and it's particularly noteworthy because it was co-written by our own Michelle Clementi. And I'm not sure where it's available. Do you know, Dave?
I don't, but I'll find out.
All right. But anyway, if you like birds and fish and things, this will help you identify them. Two things begin this week. The Ensonada Race starts on Friday. You can see it really well from the Balboa Pier, but also from the bluffs above Crohn Damar. And of course, the Film Festival begins this Thursday, and will run through for 10 days. And there'll be films, there'll also be the opening of the Port Theater, the reopening, that will help have one of the festival events, and that will be on Saturday. So that, looking forward to seeing what the new theater looks like inside. All right, consent, oh--
I had one announcement, Madam Mayor, and that is on Monday night, April 30th, in this room, at 6 o'clock. So again, Monday, April 30th, 6 o'clock, will be a meeting hosted by the city and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, not about the Lower Bay dredging project, but about the Seminole Slough dredging project. So if you live in Newport shores, around that neighborhood, and you're interested in hearing more about that project, the ins and outs of it, please join us Monday, the 30th, at 6 o'clock. Thanks.
Mayor, that Balboa Village Citizens Advisory Panel meeting is on May 2nd at 4:00 PM at the Nautical Museum.
Thank you. All right, consent calendar?
All matters listed under--
All matters listed under Consent Calendar, items 1 through 12, are considered routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the city council staff or the public request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Members of the public who wish to discuss a consent calendar item should come forward to the lectern upon invitation by the mayor and state their name and item number. If the optional signing card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium.
Thank you. Councilman Hill?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilman Rosansky?
Nothing, thank you.
Mayor Protem Curry?
No items?
Councilwoman Daigle?
None, thank you.
Councilman Hinn?
I have nothing to pull, but I did want to note an abstention regarding item number seven having to do with the reuse of the city hall facility, in that I have previously recused myself from actions involving that subject matter due to the potential for a conflict having to do with my business relationship with the owners of one of the businesses in Vialito Plaza.
Thank you. Councilman Selich?
No items.
Number seven for me. Staff, anything you wish to pull? Does anyone in the public have an item they would like to remove from the consent calendar?
Dan Purcell, Cronin Del Mar. Item six, please.
Anyone else? Do I have a motion?
I move the adoption of the consent calendar with the exceptions of items six and seven.
Second.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the title for item three. Resolution Number 2012-27, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach authorizing and supporting the submission of a grant proposal for funding under the Orange County Transportation Authority Environmental Cleanup Tier One and Tier Two Grant Program. Would that, the motion carries unanimously?
All right. Item number six, Mr. Purcell.
Dan Purcell, Cronin Del Mar. Thank you for taking that off the consent calendar. This is for an environmental consulting contract for the Back Bay Landing, which is just off East Coast Highway as you're leaving Cronin Del Mar and heading toward Mariners Mile. It's an area down to the right where you might see motorhomes parked, sometimes some crazy different vehicles, this and that. And also down in there, we have kayak rental and boat rental, and you know, there's also a fish, like a bait thing out there. And I wanted to bring that up, but I know that's envisioned to connect with the city public docks that are kind of in the works, right across the street where the Ruben E. Lee used to be. And I did notice that there's plans for a boat dry stack, and I don't have a lot of information on exactly what that is, but those can be very large buildings, and I think it's going to have over 100 boats in it. And I don't know if they're going to have cigarette racers in there, Duffy boats, you know, what they're planning to do, or paddle-type boats or what have you. But I think this would be an opportunity because of the proximity to the ecological resources of the Upper Bay, and that we look at maybe encouraging electric boats there, if that's what we're, whatever's planned. Maybe we kind of discourage loud fuel-type boats, and maybe encourage paddling and some electric boats, and maybe some electric boats that are steerable. I know we have a lot of great electric boats out there that are kind of bob around, and they're hard to steer, but maybe boats that are electric and that can be steered easily would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, oh, yeah. Okay. And obviously, we'll have a chance to see all that as the EIR is created.
I'll move the action.
Second.
Please vote.
The motion carries unanimously?
I pulled off number seven, just because I want staff to clarify, to be very clear that what we're approving tonight is merely a way of opening the process and not setting anything, any sort of standards.
Mayor Gardner, that is correct. We, what we're asking the city council to do is to authorize staff to proceed with initiating the general plan amendment, a zone change for this property, as well as an amendment to our land use plan. So that will, once, if council gives us that authority to proceed, it will begin the discussion as to what those standards will be and the appropriateness of the land use designation and everything that goes with that.
Right. But we are not committing ourselves to a two-story or a four-story or anything else.
No, that will have to be discussed through the process.
I just wanted to have that clarified, because I know there was some concern that we were suddenly approving something, and we were just getting the door open there. All right. Can I have a motion?
Move the item. Second.
Please vote.
I'd like to point out that council member Hannah has recused himself and left the chambers. And public comment?
Oh, I'm sorry. Is there a public comment on this?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Robert Hawkins, City of Newport Beach. We look forward to the environmental review on this project. Oftentimes, public agencies do not treat environmental review appropriately, and I think here, the environmental review would actually allow the city to study a bunch of different options. We have encouraged the Orange County Transportation Authority to do the same thing in connection with the 19th Street Bridge. I would encourage you to be doing that with this project. I also was concerned, as a former planning commissioner, I was concerned that this initiation actually required something of environmental review. But then I remembered that we do have a zoning code, so I looked at the zoning code, and the zoning code regards this action tonight as the functional equivalent of an application by a private party. Private party doesn't have to conduct environmental review to apply for a project. But I think that the environmental review on this project needs to happen as soon as possible. In addition, I think that the Citizens Advisory Panel needs to be involved in this. I've said that before in connection with parts of this project, and I would encourage you to rely on that panel for its advice and guidance. Thank you very much.
Is there any other public comment? All right. Vote.
With council member Hannah recusing himself, the motion carries.
Public comments?
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject jurisdiction of the city council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
The last speaker is this speaker, Robert Hawkins. I represent the Friends of Dolores and the Friends of the Bridge. We, as you know, appealed the OCTA decision regarding the deletion of the 19th Street Bridge as exempt under the California Environmental Qualities Act, although the committee responsible for this action saw a short shrift of our appeal. The board actually yesterday had an extended discussion and was split, was unable to move the action, and therefore it was continued until May 14th. I think this gives all the parties, including the City of Newport Beach, the opportunity to resolve the issues. And we were, we were not assisted or joined by the city in our appeal, but the city's comments were helpful in getting the discussion going. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Others? Someone here?
Mayor Gardner and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I believe it was last November that the city attorney's office asked the city's many boards, commissions, and committees to adopt a new agenda format in which public comment was restricted to a single three-minute opportunity on all items combined at the very beginning of each meeting. And I think it was in December or January that Councilman Rosansky asked that review of that new policy be placed on the council agenda. But that never, never happened. Instead, the city staff, apparently pretty much on its own initiative, hired, as is our custom, an outside consultant, in this case, one from San Diego, and she has been, has prepared for us a handbook, and has for the past month or so been training the more prominent boards and commissions on how they should conduct their hearings, or meetings, I should say. I don't think this is entirely bad, and she has indeed some good ideas, but what bothers me is that we are a nation of the people who believe that the purpose of our government is to serve us as we wish to be served, with our will being expressed through you, our elected representatives. In this case, however well-intentioned, the direction seems to be coming not from us through you, but rather from, coming, bubbling up from the city staff, telling us how we should govern ourselves. That seems distinctly backwards to me. This handbook is not, as far as I know, an expression of any public policy set by this council in public after weighing public input on the issues it confronts. Moreover, as part of the training, it appears that every board and commission member is being asked to sign a page full of pledges, including to read and follow the handbook, and when in doubt, on all the possible actions to do as staff instructs them to do. Asking commissioners to sign such pledges is not only demeaning, it is unconstitutional. I think training is good, but it should be to standards set by the people through this council, and not by standards set by the city staff or outside consultants. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Daigle?
I did, a commissioner had brought that, a couple commissioners had brought that to my attention. I did talk to the city attorney about it, and I think his idea was to possibly bring it to the council, maybe have a study session.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, seeing none. We'll go to reports from the council on committee activities. Councilwoman Daigle?
Yes. As one of the directors on the vector control, it's a county agency. The mission of vector control is to protect people from vectors, which are things like mosquitoes and fleas and rats that carry and transmit diseases. And according to the district, the ultimate vector is the mosquito. More than 2 million people die each year because of the mosquito. Obviously, in countries with malaria, not locally, but it is a very, a vector that is very troubling. So what the vector control asked me and all the trustees to take to their cities is consideration of an ordinance that would help them to identify properties that are now being repossessed by banks or in foreclosure. And the difficulty that they're running into is they go to do abatement on a property, and they can't determine who the owner is. So they've asked the city to, to help with that. We may have other reasons why we would want to identify ownership. Of course, it's on the tax rolls, but what they're referring to is when a property becomes repossessed and it's not yet reflected in the tax rolls. So I forwarded the staff, the ordinance. Fountain Valley adopted it, and then maybe we get something we want to consider. But I did pledge to the vector control that I would ask the city to consider it. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hinn?
Two reports. The first on the Tidlins Management Committee, which met on April 18th at 4:00 PM at Oasis. Several things on the agenda that are of note. The Citizens Advisory Panel that's connected to the Tidlins Management Committee has produced a first draft of a Tidlins Infrastructure Management Plan, and that is a, that's a 10-year plan to handle and prioritize the most important projects that they saw that the harbor needs to benefit from. And I think they did a very good job with that, and we're very pleased with that first draft. We'll be considering it again at the next Tidlins Management Meeting, and hopefully producing a report to the council for consideration sometime soon after that. That's a very important step forward in terms of our desire to better manage and maintain and improve our harbor. We did have an item on the agenda for further discussion on dredging the lagoon at Linda Isle, but that item was deferred to the next meeting. We had an item on, an update on the dredging of the Lower Bay. This is an extensive project that has been initiated now to dredge essentially all parts of the Lower Bay to minus 11 mean low-low water, which is deep enough to provide for the navigation of all but the deepest keel boats in our harbor unobstructed, even at low tide. And so it's a really great project. It's the first time in 80 years that there's been extensive harbor-wide dredging in the lower harbor. That project, the contractor for that was named, it's R.E. State. I think I pronounced that correctly. S.T.A.I.T.E. The project will start on May the 1st. There will be equipment in the harbor consisting of a large dredge and a smaller dredge and three scows to put the stuff in. There are two main segments to the project. First is to dredge the material on the, on the sediment material that is not suitable for dumping in the ocean, open ocean. And that material needs to go into a big hole in Long Beach Harbor, similar to where we put the dredgings from the Rhine Channel. There's a timeline on that. That needs to be completed by June the 30th. And so I just want to let folks know that there's going to be a lot of activity in our harbor, and that activity will probably be going on at least six days a week at the start, probably from 6:00 in the morning until 9:00 or 10:00 o'clock at night, because we have to meet that June 30th deadline. That is a non-movable deadline. Following the completion of that Port of Long Beach dredging, then other dredging will continue in and around the harbor until generally the end of the summer. And so the good news is that that dredging will take place in various spots at different times, and so we're going to do our very best to provide good outreach to the residents and business owners and users of the harbor as we're moving around the harbor, doing that dredging, and rely upon the goodwill of all of those folks to work with us as we're completing this project. It's just a great project, and a momentous one for the lower harbor. So we hope the whole project will be done by approximately September the 30th. This is in the range of a $9 million project for the harbor, including county and federal and city money. And so it's just a great opportunity for improving our harbor very quickly. The last item that we considered on the Tidlins Management Committee meeting was the addition, the expansion of our Citizens Advisory Panel to include a member of the current Harbor Commission, so that we can better improve the coordination between those two groups, the Tidlins Management Committee and our Harbor Commission. So we're looking forward to an agenda item here at council sometime soon to approve that change to the Tidlins Management Committee structure. And then the July 4th committee met, just, well, let's see here, I've got the agenda. That met on Monday, April 16th, here in the city council chambers, council member Rosansky and I and city staff. And the purpose of that committee is to consider our strategy and plan to deal with all of the fun we have on the peninsula on July the 4th. And we have been engaged now for two or three years in a multi-year strategy to change both the culture and the ongoings on July 4th on the peninsula to make it into a family-friendly holiday, as well as one to be enjoyed by lots of adults. And we're making great progress this year. For the first time, we expect that we will not be barricading off the streets on the entrance to the peninsula. We will have a free flow of traffic up and down Balboa Boulevard and Newport Boulevard. We will still have lots of police presence. We will still have the loud and unruly gathering ordinance in the background here to help people remember that they need to have fun, but within boundaries. And we'll have another parade, a family parade in the morning, and other activities on the peninsula. This, I think, is a real breakthrough for us. I'm very pleased. I'm very thankful for staff's leadership and participation to make this happen. I'm very thankful for the participation of our community in planning the various events and family-friendly things like the parade. I'm really looking forward to this. It'll be a good year to test it. Fourth of July comes on a Wednesday this year, and so hopefully we'll have a little bit of a head start in taking another big step forward toward that vision that we have of really changing how the Fourth of July affects our peninsula. And that's my report.
Thank you. Councilman Selich?
No reports.
Councilman Hill?
No report.
Councilman Rosansky?
No reports, thank you.
Mayor Protem Curry?
No reports.
And I have none. All right. Moving on to our public hearing, the first is the development agreement with Hoag Hospital.
Madam Chair, members of the city council, this is an annual-
Madam Chair, members of the City Council, this is an annual review of the development agreement with Hoag Memorial Hospital. Just to refresh everyone's memory, the development agreement was first executed in 1994. It's a 25-year agreement. It expires in 2019. What we're really looking at is to determine whether or not Hoag is acting in good faith, compliance with the development agreement. Staff has reviewed the terms of the development agreement and Hoag's submittal demonstrating information that they suggest they are in compliance. Does include a noise report that staff did review and look at, and what I can say is that everything's working pretty well out there. They are in compliance with the noise provisions. There really has not been any significant new construction on, in the campus, although they are constructing and reconstructing some of the upper campus buildings from time to time. And in that respect, I did, we did receive one email correspondence. I did provide you a copy. It's a fairly long email. I did review it this afternoon. I'll be following up with the drafter of this email with her specific concerns, but I didn't notice anything in here that would, any new information in here that would suggest that Hoag is not in compliance with the provisions of the development agreement. With that, that concludes my report, and we are recommending that you do find Hoag in good faith compliance with the development agreement.
Any questions of staff? All right. Public comment on this item?
Mayor Gardner, members of the council, my name again is Jim Mosher. I just wanted to remind you, as I did a year ago, on handwritten page 14, the report reminds us that Hoag Hospital has promised to pay $150,000 towards improvements of what is called the Sunset View Park, and hopefully the city will take them up on that offer before the agreement expires. Thank you.
Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, my name is Eric Therner. As you know, I've been active over the years along with Dick Runyon on issues related to Hoag and Villa Balboa. The reason I'm here tonight is I just wanted to give you a brief update on a meeting that Dick and I had with Hoag on March 22nd. We hope this will be the beginning of a series of meetings that will give us an opportunity to increase communication, identify problems and issues, and work together to find solutions to those problems. The meeting on, on the 22nd lasted about two hours. It was attended not only by Dick and I, but Kerry Brooks, Dennis O'Neil, Ania Robinson, and Greg Simpson from Hoag. And what I can tell you is though, although we did not solve every problem, Dick and I came away from this meeting with a very positive feeling. We felt that Hoag not only was very open to listening to our concerns, but also responsive in promising to address them. In several instances, we found they'd already anticipated some of the problems or issues that we raised. For instance, there were some landscaping issues, and they indicated they were already working on potential solutions to those problems. A couple of issues they didn't anticipate, but which we raised, they have since addressed. There was a light, a problem with a light on a light pole near the Cogen plant that was reflecting into Villa Balboa, and light's since been turned off. Also, there was a piece of equipment near the conference center that was making quite a bit of noise, particularly at night, it was cycling. We brought this to their attention, we mentioned to them, we weren't even sure if it truly violated the development agreement or the sound regulations, but that it was problematic, and we were pleased to learn today that they're planning on replacing the equipment, piece of equipment, which we think will address the noise issue. And one other issue that we were, that was addressed is the temporary trailers down near the Cogen plant. Those have kind of been a little bit of an eyesore to Villa Balboa over the years, and they have removed about half the trailers, I think, and really cleaned up the work area there, and we understand the trailers may be gone entirely before too long. There are still a few things that we're working on them with. One thing we hope they'll do at some point is address some of the lighting issues on the lower campus parking lot, maybe turn the lights down or off past a certain hour. But while they didn't promise to address those issues, they did say they would continue to talk to us about them with an open mind, so we look forward to working with them on, on the lighting issue. So in any case, that is kind of a brief synopsis of what happened. We're going to be meeting with them going forward, and hopefully next year can give you a similar positive report on our meeting.
Were these issues that you're talking to them about covered in the development agreement, or are these just issues in general, would you say?
Uh, I think it was a combination. Some of them are just things that have come up in the interim. For instance, the noisy piece of equipment by the conference center was not something that was, has ever been addressed or been an issue before. Certainly, some of the landscaping, I think, is part of the land, is part of the development agreement. For instance, you know, Hoag has promised to grow some vines up the side of the Cogen plant, and that's been partially successful, but there's some, one area of lattice work that doesn't have any vines on it. So that was one of the issues that we were going to raise, but they'd already anticipated and started developing some plans to get the vines to grow. Similar issue with foliage on some of the trees down there. It's not as dense as we would like, doesn't fit with our idea, the canopy of trees that was discussed before, but they are working on a new fertilizing program and new watering that we hope will address those, those issues.
Good. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any other public comment?
Good evening, Chair Gardner and members of the council. I'd like to reiterate in part what-
Could we have your name, please?
Dick Runyon, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Yes, what Eric just mentioned, in that we did meet with, with Hoag approximately a month ago, and in a spirit of fighting new cooperation, the four members of Hoag, Kerry, Greg, Nina, and Dennis, who I think is the legal counsel of Hoag, did meet for a couple of hours, and it went very well, and we did address, as Eric mentioned, items that were directly related to the development agreement and others that Hoag responded to by and large favorably. Subsequent to that, one item did come up in the report that was submitted by Hoag in regard to the sound tests, the noise level tests, and that too is in the process of being addressed. Jim has been very rigorously pursuing that issue, and has expressed some correspondence to Kerry. I just want to very briefly mention what those are, because as you know, the building, the 200 Paris Lane building sits right in front of the Cogen plant, which is most sensitive to the, to the sound issues, and I think we're going to be able to work forward in the spirit of cooperation. And in that spirit, I offer these suggestions. Heretofore, that all the sound measures have been taken just prior to this annual meeting, which means they've been basically winter time measures. As you all know, the prevailing wind conditions do vary throughout the year, so one of the things that we hope will take place is that those measures will occur in other seasons, summer, fall, and spring. Not all of those seasons, but maybe each year a different season, so there don't need to be more measures, just at, at different times. They take place mid-morning, mid-afternoon, and we'd also suggest a late evening meeting or measurement in an early morning, something like 2:00 AM, and generally the measurements have been taken at about those times. The measurements are taken at the superior end of the 200 Paris Lane building, which is right adjacent to Superior, the same building on what we refer to as the Hoag Inn, which is the same building the opposite end. I think there was a bit of a challenge in the measurement. This time it was taken at sub-grade level, five feet below grade, below the first level of the building, so there's no sightline even to the Cogen plant from that level. I think that was probably an oversight. We think that will be changed. We would propose measurements at five feet, 20 feet, and 35 feet, so it will be at the top of the building and the lower levels of the building with the sound metrics. One of the other conditions that we were concerned about during the sound measurements, there are four towers, cooling towers there. At the time of the tests, only three towers were operational. We would hope to see all four towers in operation with maximum speeds to generate what conditions occur periodically throughout the year. And again, thank you so much for your time, and I'm glad to be able to report the spirit of cooperation with Hoag. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there other public comment on this, on this agenda item?
Hello, my name's Kelly Hacker, and I'm a homeowner and resident at the 260 building, and my head kind of lays down catty-corner to where the loading area is. And I think that, first, I wanted to thank everybody for the lovely double-pane windows. We really appreciate the, the sound wall for what it's done and, and the windows. It's, it's very nice that that was done for us, and we do appreciate it. But the noise, the HVAC system that they just built is directly over the loading area, so that's like the most noise impact that, and there's really only 18 at the most, probably half that, that are really affected by that loading, that loading area. It's got the baler and the trash compactor, and it seems to me like they should possibly be able to enclose that a little more. Like, I had suggested a long time doing like a loading lane, calling it loading lane and doing, you know, an arched, like the church that's, that was on old, Newport Boulevard coming down south on the right-hand side by Armstrong's. It was a structure that looks like a building, but it, it's out of canvas. It doesn't take, it's, it's not very expensive compared to footings and all the things, and I think it might enclose some of the noise if that continues to be a problem. But the thing that I was more concerned about was the height variance that was granted for, from what my understanding was, it was supposed to be an awning that was 13 feet above the height maximum now. And then I was looking on the website for Newport Beach for the permits, and they had applied for a 13-foot retaining wall by 206 feet long, which didn't seem like anything to do with an awning for handicapped. So I know that's going to block some views, and now it's been changed to a fence, a wind block, and various retaining walls around the location. And that, anything is going to block that view for that building, and then that opens up the whole process of when they transfer the square footage back down to lower campus, which I understand they can, can now, and that wasn't my understanding to begin with. So when they transfer that square footage back down and they build the buildings downstairs, that kind of leaves down the lower campus, that kind of leaves the height situation open for possible further. And it was my understanding also that we were promised in some agreement that Hoag was not going to block our views any more than the cancer center, the height of the cancer center. So I know everyone knows that the elevations are up and down and up and down, so that's, that's my concern about how that's going to affect us.
Okay, well, I think that Jim Campbell suggested he'll be contacting you, is that correct?
Well, absolutely. What I, what I would maybe indicate for the record is, is that the height variance was reviewed by the planning commission, and they're actually not implementing that full project, it's just a cover over one of the stairwells. And all of those projects that she mentioned are part of an, an upper campus improvement project between the existing parking structure and the south entrance. And all of that was found to be consistent with the development agreement and the PC text, and there has not been any change in the regulations for the lower campus height limits.
Okay.
But I will follow up specifically with her on each of her issues.
Okay, great.
Thank you so much for your time and all of your hard work.
Yes, thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you.
I saw a dog.
She is my out-of-control service dog.
Oh, okay.
She shut up at the dairy dog store, and then she became so excited that I didn't involve her with the bylaw association.
Oh.
She needs to go back for some training.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other public comment? Does anyone from Hoag wish to speak?
Good evening. My name's, my name's Kerry Brooks with Hoag Hospital, project manager. Just to let you know, we've read the report, are in agreement with the findings and support the report, but also to Dick's comments too, we'll aggressively pursue managing, per the engineer's recommendations, the noise issues we have on campus and continue to work with Dick and Eric and the entire team going forward to make sure we meet the mandates of the, the development agreement. And also just to answer any questions in general you might have on the plant material or lighting or anything at all.
I don't have any questions, but I'm glad to hear of the spirit of cooperation that exists now, which had in past years, certainly several years back, and I hope it continues and blossoms.
Yeah, well, it's from both sides. It's refreshing, if you've been positive.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, do you have a motion?
I'll move the item. Second.
Please go. Motion carried unanimously? Just as a matter of curiosity, how much staff time is involved in preparing these annual reports? I know that the Hoag does most of it, but would you say?
I think the last year's item was with, with the noise testing, it ran about $5,000, but in terms of time for this year, it's less than 20 hours. You know, periodically, we go through and review Hoag, you know, when they have their projects come in, and I do, do drive-throughs periodically through the year, but it's, you know, it's 20 to 25 hours a year.
Okay. But just, just, it might be, I don't know, are there any ways to simplify it, and still providing the protections and reporting that, that the neighbors would like, something to think about in the future? The next item is number 14, and I think staff has something on that.
Yes, Madam Mayor, staff is recommending the continuance of this item until your May 8th meeting. We did provide a supplemental memorandum in your packet late last week. We are asking this continuance in order to allow the applicant sufficient time to prepare and execute a recorded, a restricted covenant to be recorded against the property. So it is our recommendation that this be continued until May 8th.
May I, Protem Curry?
I was just going to move in a second.
Oh, well, all right, before we do, I just, for people listening, the clarification that what the applicant will be doing is something that will, the council then will opine on. So it's not, there was some concern when they, when certain people heard about it, that, oh, well, he's, gets to do whatever he wants because he's doing the recording. I mean, he's doing the writing of the covenant. This is not the case. It still comes to council at that, in two weeks, where we will then decide whether it meets the criteria.
Madam Mayor, that is correct. This is, this is something that they have voluntarily proposed to the City Council, and they are bringing it back to the City Council in a format that can be recorded. But the City Council does have the opportunity to review the proposal in conjunction with the lot line merger.
All right, thank you. All right. Yes.
And I would assume that during this time, the goal is for the parties to get together and try to resolve something?
We, that's something to be wished, but apparently it's not, the last meeting they had was not very conducive to that, to an expected outcome, so. But there's two weeks, we can hope. Mayor Protem Curry?
Move the item.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please go. Oh, a public comment, please, on this item?
Corley Newman with Government Solutions. We're located at 1 San Joaquin Plaza here in Newport Beach. We concur with the staff's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Does that mean I see someone else? Yes.
Mayor Gardner and council members, Clifford Jones, representing as a spokesman for the Silvers, the Campbells, the Artists, and the residents of our area. This has been a very long process. There's been a lot of delays that have been asked for and been granted, and we were told that this night, tonight, was the final, and it was all going to be over, and we could all go our ways, and they could have the health issues taken care of that they needed to have taken, the vacations, the things could be taken care of, and now we find that, you know, it's being postponed to two more weeks. And after consulting with all of them, we would ask that it be postponed for a further time period, so these things can be taken care of and be represented fully at that time. And so we were requesting, rather than May 8th, that it would be pushed back until June 26th.
Maybe we could hear from the applicant to see whether or not they're agreeable to that?
That would not be acceptable to us. If there was a few more weeks, but I, June 26th is really asking a lot of the applicant. Thank you.
What?
I don't understand what would be accomplished between now and June 26th either.
All right. Would you come back up, please?
Sure.
Well, who filed the appeal?
Appeal is by-
Yes, they did.
Mr. Guida.
Can you explain perhaps more fully why, just lengthier?
Well, they've now scheduled some operations, also vacation-
They? Who's "they"?
They, the people that are involved in this that are affected.
Okay.
The Silvers, the Campbells, myself, and other residents that would be here representing during this time period, because we were told this 24th was the date that was kind of the drop-dead date, so to speak. It wasn't going to be pushed back towards this.
Okay.
And we didn't find this out until this weekend, so it was a very troublesome-
All right. The only thing is that was my, I mean, I was approached, as probably others were, by your side, and asking for the meeting to be moved from tonight to two weeks from now.
To my side?
Yeah. And so they're, because they felt that they were very close, and there could be a meeting and work it all out, and then they had the meeting and decided it wasn't very close.
Well, I, we said that we would request it be delayed if, in fact, we could get together, and obviously, we were too far apart from that standpoint, but again, everybody had planned on these things, and if we can't accommodate them, we've been over backwards in this entire motion, okay, and how length of time. It's been seven months, okay? And in the appeal from the Mr. Guida's side, it says that we do this in 60 days, okay, unless agreeable to both parties or the City Council. And we've been agreeing for extensions, and extensions, and extensions, and now this is the first time we've asked for anything, and we certainly like you to look at it from that standpoint.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Hill?
I would offer a substitute motion to postpone this to June 12.
To June 12th? Is that what you said? All right. Is there a second to that motion? No. The motion dies for lack of a second.
I'll move that we continue to, was it May 2nd?
May 8.
Oh, that motion's on the floor.
Just a question of the city attorney. This is all the right procedures as far as who gets to continue and request continuance, and how does all that work?
Well, the applicant is the one who filed the appeal. I mean, you're, it's anywhere within your discretion to move it to another date besides May 8. There's no timing issues related to the zoning code. I know the applicant, as opposed to having it heard later, it doesn't appear that there's any ability for them to come to any type of agreements, so I'm not sure what the council would like to do with that, but it's within your discretion to move it to a later date if you like.
All right. Any further questions? Please vote. The motion carries unanimously?
So the date is May 8, correct?
Motion for reconsideration?
One more item, right? Item 15.
Oh, sorry. I know. Sorry. The man, Newport Beach-
We'll have a very brief staff report, Madam Mayor and council members, from Terriff and again.
Good evening, Mayor and council. The item before you this evening is a result of requests from the Newport Dunes Waterfront Resort and Marina to be included in the Newport Beach Tourism Improvement District, Business Improvement District. The NBT bid, as it's known, Owners Association is in favor of this request. They support it, and they've asked the city to go about the process of including the Dunes in the NBT bid. This process actually began at your last meeting, when the council approved a resolution of intention to amend the Management District Plan, which is the bid's governing document. Essentially, this would include the Dunes in that document. We noticed, we mailed the resolution and posted it according to the Property and Business Improvement District Law of 1994, and at this time, we have received no protest to the change. So therefore, this evening, staff is recommending that council approves, conducts the public hearing, and adopts Resolution 2012-28, thereby amending the NBT bid management district plan.
Any questions for staff? Is there a public comment on this item?
Mayor Gardner and members of the council, my name again is Jim Mosher. At the council meeting two weeks ago, when you were announcing your intention to hold the hearing tonight, I said I thought this T-Bid experiment that the city has been involved in for the last three years was a bad idea to start with, and that expanding it is the opposite of what we should be doing. I continue to think so. If it's legal for our hotels to engage in a joint sales effort of this sort, more power to them, but that should be a private decision that should be privately implemented. I can see no legitimate reason for the city to take over the role of a collection and disbursement agency for the funds of selected members of a single industry in our city. And as I said, using the state's Business Improvement District law to permit city involvement seems a provision of that law's intent. You have the law before you in the staff report. It's all printed out here. And as it says in its preamble, "It was intended to aid underperforming businesses in blighted urban districts." That hardly describes the T-Bid's six current member hotels north of Newport Dunes, nor when it described the most successful hotel destination in Newport Beach, the Irvine Company's Pelican Hills Resort, which apparently sees this scheme as suboptimal use of marketing dollars, for they are not members of the T-Bid, and although you could force them to join if you wished to, they apparently have no interest in doing that. Secondly, the Improvement in Activities law envisions primarily using the levies for physical improvements and very generalized marketing to promote the underperforming district and attract new and better performing businesses to it. Again, that does not seem to describe what we are sanctioning and apparently encouraging the member hotels to do, which is to use Visit Newport Beach as a vehicle for directly booking sales, conference room sales into already very affluent hotels. That in itself is a problem, because it would appear to endanger the nonprofit status of Visit Newport Beach, especially since the member hotels sit on the nonprofit's board and provide direction to the nonprofit on how to enhance the profits for their own operations. However that may be, I don't realistically expect to influence your decision, so I would at least like to point out to you the final paragraph of the Management District Plan, which specifies the Visit Newport Beach organization as what the state law calls the Owners Association for this T-Bid. Under the state law, this means that whenever the Newport Beach, Visit Newport Beach organization hears, discusses, or deliberates anything relevant to the subject matter of the T-Bid, which is essentially always because the stated core purpose of the T-Bid is to provide marketing and promotion of Newport Beach as a destination, whenever it is doing those things, it must do so in compliance with the Brown Act, which means holding noticed meetings open to public scrutiny. I hope our staff will impress that undeniable conclusion on them and not let them get away in the future with allowing public attendance only at the rarely noticed meetings of the tiny subset of Visit Newport Beach that they call the T-Bid Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there other public comment?
I just had one comment. We are, have, it says the list of possible bid activities was updated to reflect those activities authorized by the 1994 Act, C Section 3. When we have things like that, it'd be helpful to have those identified in some way. I mean, otherwise, I have to go back and look at the old report and see what was new, or just an underline or something like that in the future.
All right. Do we have a motion?
I would so move and would like to make a comment after a second.
All right.
Second.
Please vote.
I don't get to make my comment?
Oh, I thought you were going to, I thought you wanted to make a comment after the vote.
After a second.
Oh. All right. Sorry.
Does it matter, Madam Mayor? I'll do it any way you'd like.
No, go ahead. I was a little surprised at that, but I was just going along.
I would like to congratulate the success of Visit Newport Beach and the T-Bid, and I'm very pleased with the expansion of its operation. This operation is not a sole operation for this one organization. The city supports, through a collection of funds and administering of those funds, all of our bid organizations throughout the city. I've lost track how many we have, but there's the Restaurant Association, there's Central Valboa, there's Mariners, I'm sorry, not Mariners, Valboa.
Marine Avenue.
Marine Avenue. Thank you. And, and they are a very important and critical part of our economic development. That's why the state law was designed in part. That's why we began them in the '90s, and that's why we're very proud of the success that they have. And as we move through the process of, with the RFP, of selecting a bid management opportunity, organization, process, I think we'll see even greater results from them, and I think it's a very important part of our activity here, and very supportive.
All right. Please vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the resolution title. Resolution number 2012-28, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach amending the Newport Beach Tourism Business Improvement District Management District Plan. With that, the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. A motion for reconsideration?
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the City Council. Either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by the, one of the council members who voted for the prevailing side.
The meeting is adjourned.